Let's pray.
Father, we love you. We thank you for this day that you've blessed us with. And Lord, we ask for your wisdom and your direction with our leaders today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. With that, I'll call the City of Vero Beach Council Meeting of June 3rd into session. Mrs. Vaughn, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mayor Winger?
Present. Preliminary matters, agenda additions, deletions, and adoptions, are there any from the council?
Two for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing. Okay, proclamations, I don't believe we have any.
We have none.
We have none. That's a rarity. All right, we'll move right on to the public comment then. Mr. Wilson, you're up first. And Mr. Wilson's asked for 10 minutes, so you know the timeframe.
When you called for Pastor Wilson, I was going to run on up here and help you out. That's right. My name is Charles Wilson, 2134 Eighteenth Avenue in Vero Beach. Things are changing rapidly, as we can see, and we'll be discussing that, I'm sure, for the long future. But regardless of which side you're on, we must agree that from the elections, from before the elections in October to today, we have taken a giant leap backwards. As I often say, there are elections have consequences, and we've seen what those consequences are today. And as a result of the last election, we have gone from a done deal to a dead deal. We have alienated our allies, and we have emboldened our adversaries. We've exchanged transparency for secrecy, appointed special interests, we have abandoned open-
Mr. Wilson, I write you still point of order, if you don't mind.
I figured you would.
That speculative in your part, all those comments, so I just make it to the public, secrecy, election, all those things. Go ahead, carry on.
Do you want to stop me at each paragraph, or just once?
Hopefully once, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you so much, sir. We have exchanged transparency for secrecy, appointed special interest, Mr. Christopher. We have abandoned open discussions for censorship, and it's clear today that negotiations have stalled, and a negotiated settlement with the FMPA is highly unlikely. What that does, and the reason I'm here today, is that gives us two options. Number one, as some say, that our first option is accepting our fate, that we will work to lower rates, and as we should. Much has been done to lower rates. You've done a great deal of work, especially under Ms. Turner's tenure. A lot of savings have been achieved, and we all agree that we need to continue to work on savings that we can find in our, and we can work together on that. But when we, with that one option of accepting our fate, we also will never get FPNL rates, never. We've been promised that since 1976. It's not happening then, it does not happen today. There are no end of the contracts. People ask me, why don't you just wait till the contracts expire? They never expire, never expire. And what we're not feeling, figuring, remembering, is that things could get a lot worse. We're assuming that things can't get worse. Well, we've lost $54 million in four years. So what, how much is it worth to get out of, from under these decisions that we have made over the past years? What if there's more regulation of coal, which they're talking about up in Washington? A disaster, a disaster. What about unfettered mismanagement by the FMPA? Continued speculation has cost us millions of dollars. We owe almost the same today as we did 30 years ago, under the mismanagement. Millions in repairs and upgrades we could be facing. And again, we've lost $54 million. So for most of us, permanently higher rates and no protection from future financial disasters, and permanent, never-ending hostages, simply is not an acceptable option. So we also have option two. And now that we all would have preferred a negotiated settlement, and as FPNL said, if you have motivated sellers acting in good faith. Now, we do not have motivated sellers acting in good faith. And some question whether we have, our buyers acting in good faith, and some question whether we have motivated sellers acting in good faith. But we now need, have only this option, option two, which is to explore legal, regulatory, and political options. But under that, we again have two choices. Some say, as the city attorney has told us, some say that contracts are unchallengeable, that we should accept our slavery and quit complaining. We've been told by Mr. Kement that, that he has been told that the contracts cannot be challenged. Now, that's what he said during this last meeting. I'm getting deja vu all over again. I'm standing before a hostile council, a majority which have been recommended by the Indian River Neighborhood Association, being told by our county, by our city attorney, giving legal opinions that have not been thoroughly researched. We've been here before. So I ask this, especially since, Mr. Mayor Winger, you have indicated that you will oppose at least one version of a partial sale, having to do with the Indian River shores and the county's efforts to leave our fine organization. Now, others who don't believe that the contracts are unchallengeable, hold that the 1983 ruling that the city attorney has dealt with was about the establishment of FMPA and about their bonds, about the issuance of bonds, okay? It, I don't know, and maybe we should find out, perhaps the city attorney can tell me, how it addressed things like, the FMPA said that they never envisioned a sale of the electric utility to anyone outside of their cartel. And rest assured, FMPA is not a co-op, it is a cartel. And that, since they never contemplated a sale outside of their cartel, that means it's not in the contract. So how, may you, may I ask, did the 1983 Supreme Court rule upon an issue that was not in the contract then or now? So the fact is, is that the statement that we have no right, the citizens of Vero Beach have no right to their day in court, is simply inaccurate. Maybe perhaps, and I don't even know, did the city attorney read those? I read them, and I agree that I'm the world's worst lawyer. I don't try to be a lawyer, but you know what? I'm real close, because looking at the legal advice that we've had for the last 30 years, we've been outgunned every single time. How did we get ourselves into no-ending contracts that are, that, who represented us? And so that's my point today, is the 1983 ruling, did it address the number of customers? Because that's changed. The size and configuration of the territory, the sale of an entity other than the cartel, PSC oversight, refinancing requirements, value assets, dissolving of the electric utility, changes in state law regarding munis, misappropriation of funds, antitrust, life of assets, 30-year contracts, tax status of bonds sold, investment assets of the city, and a hundred other issues, including the number of members of the FMPA board required to pass something. The Supreme Court of Florida has not weighed in on any of those issues. And all of them are main issues that we face. My, so continuing to be told, the public is continuing to be told, that all legal minds agree that there are no legal options, and that is completely wrong. All legal minds do not feel that way. We are talking, we are taking the word of the FMPA and their special interest allies and not seeking competent advice who are on our side. That doesn't mean that our legal people aren't nice people. Mr. Wright, I've just met, I'm sure he's a very nice person. I don't know whether he's on our side or not. He has a history of representing against the people who are trying to get the sale. Perhaps he's changed his mind, I don't know. Why is the FMPA being allowed to operate as a monopoly? Remember, they have responsibilities. We keep talking about the FMPA's contractual rights. Why are the FMPA contractual rights more important than the legal rights of the residents, citizens, and taxpayers, and ratepayers of the city of Vero Beach? I will point out that in the 1983 ruling by the Supreme Court, it lists all the plaintiffs and the defendants. And in the, under the defendants, it lists every city, and every single one of them start out with, every resident, property owner, subject to taxation within the city. It says nothing about outside ratepayers. Not a word about outside ratepayers. So what I ask you, in answer to the question, councilperson who's reading something, Graves, asked several weeks ago, when she was asked, her answer was-
Mr.-
What would you expect me to do?
Mr. Wilson, I'd prefer that you not reference people. You can say somebody in the city council, if you like.
I'm quoting the minutes. Unless you want me to change the minutes. She said, what do you expect me to do? And the answer is, the county commission and the town of Indian River shores have hired legal representation to investigate their legal options. Vero should do the same. Either join them or independently seek a information, a presentation to this board that outline your legal options. No matter how much you think they might be or might not be, what are your legal options? Because I don't know that you know. And I ask one of you, any one of you, to put on the agenda, on the June 17th agenda, an item to allow discussion and a vote to take place. We need a recorded vote to see which one of our councilpeople are willing to fight for our citizens, and which one of our councilpeople are resigned to accept higher rates and dangerous financial possibilities for the future of our city, for years, decades, generations, maybe even forever. Negotiations are dead. Are you willing to fight for Vero, or do we have to find other councilpeople who are? Is there anyone willing to legally challenge the FMPA as is our right? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. By the way, it was exactly 10 minutes to the second, so very good job, meeting the time. Yes, sir. Mr. Whittle is next, please, under the comments.
19th Park Avenue, Vero Isles, in the city. I want to talk about the lagoon to start with, and actually, things change since I started with this. The, could you put that, okay. The lagoon reacted to all of the pollutants that we put in, and came up with a beautiful algae bloom last week. It was in the paper. I've got some pictures. This is what it looks like towards the end of our canal. To the left is the algae, to the right is the river. Anyway, it's not a very pretty picture. I started out, that, in the middle of the month of May, we had a lagoon action assembly up in Melbourne, which was run by the Marine Research Council. I went there as an agent of IRNA. Judy Orcot went there for the Lagoon Coalition, and Dr. Baker went there for the Audubon Society. Tim Zork was supposed to go there for the city. Unfortunately, on the way to the Thursday night dinner, he broke his arm, and that sort of held him up a little bit. But anyway, we met, and the last afternoon, we put together 10 items, action items, from all of the input, from all of the 100 delegates. We had 130 items, we brought it down to 10. They will be on the website, they are not published yet, they wanted to reword the wording a little bit. So anyway, so this is unfortunately what's going on in the lagoon. I've talked to Mr. O'Connor, and I've talked to, to Monty Falls, as to how can we get this stuff out of here? Because as you have a sample there, it sort of smells. And it would be nice for somehow to get out. Now, one of the things that we have done is, the IRNA has printed 500 bumper stickers, because the ordinance you have says that there should be no fertilizer between the 1st of June and the end of September. So I've given you each one. I also gave a whole bunch to Mr. O'Connor. I hope that he can get them put on the city vehicles, so that we get the education out to people. The other item I like to talk about with this is that Alexis Thomas has been hired by the county. She has done an excellent job. She came and talked to us, she's gone to all of the stores, looked at all the fertilizer that they sell, told them which ones meet the ordinance, which ones don't, and has been working with Scotts to try and get their bag changed, because they change their bag, and it's very difficult to tell on their bag whether it's got 50% low, slow-release nitrogen or not. Now, you have passed an ordinance, you don't really have anybody out there policing it. So I talked to the county and asked them, could Alexis come in the city, maybe one day every two weeks? Because what she does, is she goes around, and if she sees someone cutting the grass, she goes up to them and checks that they've taken their, the training, that they have a license if they're putting on fertilizer, et cetera. And if they don't, then she cites them. But she can't do it in the city. The county says that they would be glad to let her do this, but we got to work out some kind of an agreement. And so I hope the city council would ask Wayne to work with the county to do this, because it would be much cheaper than having someone we hire to do the same thing. And she's doing a very good job. And she knows what she's doing. She has talked to the owners of the various companies that sell fertilizer, and told them what they should be selling. But unfortunately, the county ordinance doesn't say that they can't sell anything they want. And that would be a good addition to the ordinance, to say that you can't sell it if it doesn't meet the ordinance. But they haven't done that. Now, the third thing, I asked for 10 minutes, but I'm not going to take 10 minutes. I'll give you, and I passed out those things early to save you some time. I was asked to write a letter to Governor Scott, and-
Hi, hey.
I made it one page, because if you write anything over one page, nobody reads it. And so I tried to put in there everything towards the STEP ordinance that Rob Bolton has tried to put together, which was screwed up in Tallahassee, did not get passed, even though everybody agreed to it, to ask him if he could use his influence to get the two dissenting, or change, the two departments that seem to disagree with what the ordinance says, and whether we can use STEP or not to agree that we can use it. And so I, I gave this at our meeting up in Melbourne for other people, because there are other areas that would also like to use the STEP system. And I will be sending it out from our association, we have a meeting tomorrow night, it'll go from then. I gave it to Judy Orcot for all of her people in the coalition to send, and hopefully he'll be lambasted with letters, so he can get this done. So that's what I have to present. I hope that you will, in fact, work with the county on getting Alexis to work with us. I know you do have a man here, who if I call and tell him that some, I see a violation, he will work on it, but there's nobody going out and doing anything.
May I make a suggestion, and you have three minutes left? It'd be funny, but essentially, Mr. O'Connor, what about you and Wayne, and I would be glad to get involved, if that's helpful, with Mr. O'Brien, who I knew has offered to do so? One of the things about using Alexis is that there would be some cost, but be that as it may, I think we should work, I think we should, you know, consider working something out, because I think it's a valuable suggestion. They're better equipped to do it. If you remember, their original code would have included the entire area, and then it changed to, you know, be only outside municipal boundaries, wherever they are. I don't know whether that would meet with city council's opinion or not, but I think it's, it's worth moving ahead in some portion.
We can contact the county and at least get a price of what it would, what the cost would be to have the one or two days a week coming into the city.
I don't say one or two days a week, one, maybe one or two days a month.
One or two, okay.
Yeah, I don't think-
Is this acceptable to council? I mean-
We'll bring back the information to council for your consideration.
Ms. Turner, Ms. Graves, is it acceptable to you, Mr. Kramer?
I think certainly it's worth exploring. Thank you.
Is that acceptable to you?
For information, yes.
Okay, for information. The second thing is this letter is, I haven't seen the letter except on the screen, and therefore only a portion of it, but is this something that the city of Vero Beach should be sending to the governor? And I don't know what the wording of it is, but it's a question.
Since we haven't seen it, yeah, I can't. Certainly something to be discussed for another meeting, until we've all had a chance-
Mrs. Vaughn, why don't you bring it forward, under your matters for the next meeting, as to whether we would like to have it sent on behalf of the city to the governor?
This is, also might be something to take up with the Florida League of Cities, if we have it all possible. Of course, after you've read it.
I was going to say, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. The, you know, if you look at this area, we have three wonderful things here. I've said this many times, we have the ocean, we have this wonderful little city, and we have the lagoon. And the lagoon, in my mind, is the most pressing problem that the area has, is, as large a problem as the train is, and as much as we don't want the train, and all the other problems we have, the lagoon is of paramount importance. And we all need to do whatever we can do. I now have, call Mr. Jason Redmond forward, to come forward with his views, and Mr. Redmond also, later in the agenda, there's another item that I called to your attention, that you may want to stay for it, I don't know.
Right, I saw that. I don't want to be yelling in this thing. But two things, I didn't, I didn't know that was going to be on there up until yesterday, when I got it, and I don't read my own writing very well, so you may not, it may take me a little bit of time. Real quick, there's a lot of people here that would like to speak on this. Are they going to have a shot to speak as well? Okay, will that be open after I speak?
Anytime.
Yes, you know, and you asked for extra time, so you have the time you asked for. With them, we would ask they can find their comments, the three minutes.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, basically, right now, I'm here today, not as Jason Redmond, but I'm here as a proponent of all the players, all the youth, and families, and coaches, and parents right now, in the city and county that have issue with the fact that these fields are being privatized. And what I want to open up with right now is, basically to ask you guys to postpone your vote on 6A today, on this lease agreement. As of yesterday, 12 o'clock noon, I had no idea, and I don't think any of the constituents in your area as well, knew that there was a lease agreement even prepared. And I mean, a week ago, I asked for all the public information, and I got a letterhead from the same group, asking just the possibility of being able to be up for these fields. So as of yesterday at noon, I was pretty shocked, and being, you know, growing up here, and Rob Slezak was my camp counselor, and, and oh no, he's been here a lot longer than I have. And I was a little upset, you know, I felt like I should have been able to see this information a lot longer, which, after I was a little bit upset about that, maybe I thought, okay, maybe these guys just turned it in. So I'm going to go with that. And what I, like I said, I'm here to, I ask you guys to postpone your vote on this lease agreement. And just for two weeks, put it on your night agenda for June 17th, give the people a chance to come out here and voice their opinion, why, or how they feel about the two groups that are trying to get some access to this land. Again, you know, privatizing is such a strong word, and I feel like that's what's trying to happen, but we're here to keep it what it is, a park that everybody can use at any given time. We propose the fact that there'll be an open calendar, and if it's open, and you want to bring your team there, if you want to bring your son or daughter there just to practice, you can have it, as long as you leave it the way you found it. We're also here to tell you guys right now, if we have a chance to take that ball field, you'll have no cost of utilities or maintenance, we'll, we're here to that. We'll take that, we'll consume that. We have a couple maintenance companies, owners, that said, as long as their kids have a place to play ball, they're willing to come out there and help us maintain it. Same thing with utilities, there's a bunch of travel baseball teams that don't have anywhere to play here, which is what they call home, here in Vero Beach and River County. They're right now going to St. Lucie County, Fort Pierce, using fields, because they don't have another option. This will give them an option. Also, we propose in the long run of adding some all-purpose fields to fix another problem, which is football. Football has nowhere to go. And River County Recreation Department has said they're going to step up and put some funding into Gifford. We'll sign up, start this month, there's locks on those fields, and there's been nothing done. So there are things that need to be handled, and we're willing to step up and do this. And it's, it's not Jason Redmond, it's not Coogie Friedman, it's the people you see sitting in here, and a lot more, that couldn't be here today, because they have to work, they have to get their kids to school. That's why I ask you to postpone your vote. I'm not asking you to deny them, you know, I'm asking you to give us a chance to educate you where we're coming from, educate everybody else where we're coming from. We're willing to come next week, talk to your Recreation Commission, let them know what our plans are, show them everything that we've got, put all our cards on the table. Let, let us give a chance to educate you guys of what we want to do, not just one side. If you do, do not choose to do that, and you, and you move to vote, and you give this, this group a field, I want to let you know you're monopolizing it, because they will now have control of all the public fields in this area. And I just don't think that's right.
How you guys doing? My name is Coogie Friedman. I own the Fieldhouse Sports Training, Baseball Training Facility in Town. I've been involved in youth sports and youth activities from all different areas of, you mean, lacrosse, football, baseball. I've constantly seen a steady decline of the availability of having fields for these youths, for parents, for, you mean, just a college kid who's coming home from college to work out in the summertime, to have access to. It's getting to the point where it's hard to find a piece of grass somewhere. My son plays youth soccer, and he's at Troy Moody Park, I believe, you mean, on a random day, to try to find a piece of property, just so they can practice, you mean, four-year-old kids, you make a group of six on their team. And same thing on the baseball, I mean, you mean, teams have extremely hard time finding any piece of property, any piece of, or any area, I mean, especially baseball fields, to have access to. And we're looking to, you mean, give them a second option, and let them have the opportunity to come out, use a facility where it's open, they can have access to it whenever they want, as long as it's available, use it, and leave it as it is. Of course, we will, I mean, take control of all utilities, there will not be any costs at all to the city. It'll be upon us to take over utilities, water, the maintenance. We have a plan in place to do so, just also to make improvements on that area, to provide a little bit, create the fields in a little better shape, so we can access different sports, you mean, have an opportunity for football, baseball, or some, or soccer, sorry, soccer, and maybe lacrosse, some other multi-use sports that we can hold the fence, and have organizations come in, and be able to have access to that. I'm just going to reiterate what Jason said, we'd like to have, you guys to think about it, give you guys some more information. If you guys can postpone it for two more weeks, till the night meeting, allow us to give you guys as much information to make a strong and, I guess, committed decision to have that, and allow people to have choice. I think that's the biggest thing, is, you mean, if you're going to a one, a single group to have control of the fields, you're going to create that monopoly, and there's nowhere else, nowhere else to go. And, you mean, I'm in the mix of it, you may see a lot of local Vero Beach teams, you mean, county teams, everybody's going to St. Lucie County, they're leaving Indian River. I mean, we need to bring that back, we need to make this grow and be strong here, have that community involvement, community support, and that's what I'm all about, and that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Mr. Connor, I have a tangential question. Having passed Bob Summers Park for 40 years, is anyone interested in that? I have always really appreciated the baseball there over all the years, is that, no one's interested in that?
No, sir, they're not. It is open, and as you know, we did not include that into the dog park lease, so the Bob Summers Field is available for baseball.
If there are further people in the public that would like to come up and talk about the baseball, then we'll take comments beyond baseball.
Mr. Redmond, are you, are you finished with your comments?
If there's time left, I'll follow up these-
That's fine.
Okay, because, yeah, I thought you kind of cut it off.
They have to get to work.
That's true.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Urrigan. I am a past president of the Vero Beach American Little League at Thompson Field, and I'm here to support Jason and Coogie for their extra efforts in this. I met with you all, I don't know how many months it was ago, almost a year ago, begging you to help us with the lights and the fees at the fields. And now we've come to this, where we've got a situation that it's-
else, nowhere else to go. And, I mean, I'm in the mix of it, you may see a lot of local Vero Beach teams, you mean, county teams, everybody's going to St. Lucie County, they're leaving Indian River. I mean, we need to bring that back. We need to make this grow and be strong here, have that community involvement, community support, and that's what I'm all about, and that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Mr. Connor, I have a tangential question. Having passed Bob Summers Park for 40 years, is anyone interested in that? I have always really appreciated the baseball there over all the years. Is that, no one's interested in that?
No, sir, they're not. It is open, and as you know, we did not include that into the dog park lease, so the Bob Summers Field is available for baseball.
If there are further people in the public that would like to come up and talk about the baseball, then we'll take comments beyond baseball.
Mr. Redmond, are you, are you finished with your comments?
If there's time left, I'll follow up these.
That's fine.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, I thought you kinda cut it off.
I have to get to work.
That's true.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Jurigan. I am a past president of the Vero Beach American Little League at Thompson Field, and I'm here to support Jason and Coogie for their extra efforts in this. I met with you all, I don't know how many months it was ago, almost a year ago, begging you to help us with the lights and the fees at the fields. And now we've come to this, where we've got a, a situation that it's, it's great, because we have people excited about the youth in this community. We have a lot of problems in this community because of the lagoon, all these things that are very, very important to us. But the youth cannot be forgotten. I have three children, three teenagers, growing up in the Vero Beach area. I grew up here years ago. I'm in the golf business, so I know a lot of what's going on in all these other little areas. So I would appreciate it if you would sit back and look at the situation that they brought to you, take that next meeting so we can get some more folks involved, so that you can make an informed opinion about what we need to do for the future of the youth of this community, the baseball, all the different things. We have some great things that have happened in the last year. We have Dick Bird Park down at South County, we have lacrosse growing, we have the girls winning state championships, we have the baseball team is resurrected at the high school. We have all these things going on up in Sebastian, all these wonderful things. So let's make sure we don't put certain groups or certain people in front of another and give everybody the same opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Are there further other comments? Come forward, sir.
Thank you. My name's Mark Scott. I own a local agency here at 1766 20th Avenue. My concern, it's interesting, you know, it's sort of ironic. I was sitting in the lobby, and behind me is a picture of Dodger Town, which is baseball. In the trophy case you have there, there's baseball bats, baseball trophies, and we're talking about baseball. I can tell you this, my son's been privileged to play baseball for five years, and with the influence of these guys and many, many others, the passion they have just to take their time. And I've told him many, many times, I could never do what you do and coach these little kids. I'd be, I'd be in trouble. You did say I had 30 minutes, right? And, you know, what comes out of being in baseball, I mean, we all know that, the teamwork, the camaraderie of the, each other. And where I have a problem, quite frankly, is not the issues of each thing, it's Little League. The word Little League and why Little League, and that's not your concern, that's a Little League decision, which I'm pursuing only because New York Life is probably one of their major sponsors. So I'm pulling strings in Manhattan to get a, it makes no sense to me that because of a charter drawing lines, we can't have Little League. That doesn't mean that Indian River Sports Complex isn't good, or Cal Ripken or Babe Ruth. It just means it's Little League, you know, just saying it, it sounds right. And I'm asking, yes, do postpone your decision, only for two weeks, to let everything come to the surface and see really ultimately what's best for the 10-year-olds, not me, not them, not you for that matter, but those little guys. Because that's really what matters, in my opinion. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Derek Muller. I live 676 Royal Palm Place. I have a little different perspective. I'm a volunteer and a friend of the guys over at the Indian River Sports Complex. I mean, I coach an eight-to-10-year-old team over there. I don't have a kid in the league. I'm one of the rare people that just wants to teach the kids and has the kids' best interest in mind. Now, with that said, okay, I like those guys, I like what they're doing over there. I don't think they can handle another park, okay? They were already kind of running Thompson this year. And Mike Jurigan, when he took care of that place, it was impeccable. It was a thing of beauty. That was a jewel. Everybody, when the tournament teams came in here, couldn't believe how great that field is, in disrepair right now. So they had plans when they proposed this field. They told everybody in the community at the meetings, at the Cal Ripken meetings, that's what they told the county, $2.3 million to fix and rebuild that complex over there. Hasn't been done yet. Why are we giving them something else? Why are we spreading them that thin? Okay? They don't need other fields. They have two little fields there and room to build, and plans to build a third over there. Why do they need, and they have Thompson, so now they got a total of four Little League-sized fields. Why do they need a fifth? You know, it just doesn't make sense to me on a business-wise. The other end of it is, is the monopoly end of it. I don't like one entity having control of all that. I think if you have competition, it's gonna be better. I know these guys, and what they propose is leaving it open to everybody. Now, we also wrote a couple big articles in Inside Vero about this, that there's nowhere to play. That's been brought up again. You got teams practicing in parking lots, parking lots, football teams, because there's no patch of grass that you can get on that's not locked, or you have to pay for. That's almost criminal. You know, my kids run around on, you know, he's gonna fall down, he's gonna get injured. Or if you find a patch of grass that's like a church parking lot, you know, it's not nice grass to run and play ball on. And you got anthills, things like that, kids turning ankles as a coach. It's problematic. So something needs to be done, and you have a group of people, volunteers. That's another thing the Indian River Sports Complex has done, is there, you know, they've had qualified volunteers that wanted to help that have been run off, just because it's just organizationally not there. Okay, they had someone at Thompson that was gonna take care of the whole field. We're talking paying for the fertilizer, taking care of it, a qualified lawn maintenance business, and they couldn't agree on that. How do you not agree to just let a guy do something for free? Okay, so, you know, there's, you know, so I fiscally understand the fact that the city needs to get this off the books. But what I would tell you is, don't, you know, I would say, I would consider them and their plan, I just like the, I like the sound of it, that it's open to everybody, not sort of special interest. You know, you have a group of people that are diverse and different sport backgrounds, so it's gonna be open to everybody. I kind of, I kind of like that. The Bob Summers Field, I have no idea why the Indian River Sports Complex doesn't take that, because it's a big field that doesn't need that much work to get fixed. That's what they need, is a bigger field. They already have the, the four smaller fields. So that doesn't make sense to me, without talking to Buddy or Chris, and what's going on over there. So the only other, the only thing that I can think of, and I don't want to speculate on rumors, are they planning on leaving that complex over there and trying to pour all their funds, if they have any, into Michael's field, which I don't know. I mean, personally, I don't want, I don't want to take on another, if I was you, I wouldn't want to take on someone who's jumping ship from another contract. The other thing is, is if they own that, and they own this, aren't they gonna play you and the county against one another? You've got two separate entities. I already hear rumblings in the background with scoreboards and trying to get permission from the county or from you. Are you guys giving them the scoreboard and the lights, and who's gonna pay to move it?
Point of order on it. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, the, your feeling about what they're doing is probably going over the limit.
Okay, that's fair. Anyway, so then I'll just back off. I would say, again, postpone it, let these guys put a proposal. And again, you know, that old saying, let's not put all our eggs in one basket. Thanks.
Is there anyone further on the, on the baseball? Mr. Redmond, you can have one minute, but you're gonna have time later on in the meeting, so you can have the last word.
Like I tell him every Saturday at 10:00 AM, that he goes over the limit. He just did. But it is, it's not about us versus them. It really isn't. It's not about them versus us, and who's gonna do what, and how it's gonna get done. It's about what's best for this community. And I say community, because it's not about the county and the city, it's about the city and the county. It's the community, and where these kids have a chance to go. It's all we're asking you to do is give us two more weeks, let us educate you on what we can bring and how we're gonna do it. Two weeks. I'll come, we'll come talk to your commission next week, and we'll come see you in two weeks. I'm just asking you to postpone it. All right, thank you guys for your time.
Okay, we'll move on to further public comment, open public comment. Yes, come forward, please.
My name is Joseph Grifanti, and I live at 441 Holly Road, access to the city of Vero Beach. Let me start out by saying that I'm here because other people are allowed to come here. Nobody's gonna tell me, nobody other than the FCC is going to restrict what's on my mind. Whatever I have to say, I'm going to say, whether the mayor or anybody else likes it. But I will respect the rulings of the FCC and limit my vocabulary to that extent. If any of you ever really want to know what I feel about you, I'm glad to see the mayor's taking notes. If any of you ever want to know what I really feel about you, catch me, approach me. I would never approach you. You approach me in a parking lot, and without the restriction to the FCC, I can tell you exactly how I feel. As far as the electric situation is concerned, it seems to me intuitively that if you're in a tight spot, which the city of Vero Beach mostly, most likely, most certainly is, regardless of what some of you may think, if you're in a tight spot, you should have access to the courts. Regardless of a contract, or whatever binds you, whatever, whatever the problem is, the public should have access to the courts. Now, three of you would not ever go along with that, at least three of you, would never seek relief from the court system. But this is what it eventually is going to come down to, because the public eventually is going to get tired of what you people are shenanigans that some of you are up to, and they're going to speak out, and they're gonna demand. Our hope right now is Indian River Shores, that they bring, as I said before, they bring this before the courts. So don't tell me that, that we can't seek a redress of a grievance before the court system, and that, that people like Nason and Vitunik and, and, what's his name, Gabbert, put us in a tight spot, and we can't get out of it. You people should recognize, all five of you, should recognize that, and do something about it. Do something about it. As far as the baseball thing, it's appalling, appalling that you people and the city manager has allowed it, I'm talking about this, what these people were just talking about, have allowed it to go that far. It's ludicrous that you people have the time to do that, your city manager has the time, and attorney have the time to work up a lease with these people. It's appalling. Good day.
Thank you for your comments. Are there further open public comments? Yes, Mr. Dig.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, good morning, City Council. Name Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue. Just up here to say a couple of words on the baseball issue. What I liked, what I heard today, it would be open to all. They're willing to pick up the maintenance. And I would ask you consideration for the youth to extend the time and give them the extra two weeks to lay all things out on the table, so you can hear both sides of the story. I will tell you, from what I heard today and what I read a little bit about this situation, it will actually reach another segment of our youth in the community. You have one entity doing one thing, you would have this entity doing the other. So it would be helpful to have two entities. So I would ask you consideration that all of you would allow the postponement for this situation. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any other further open public comment? Seeing none, we'll move beyond that, close that. But Mr. Connor, do you want to...
I'm sorry, Mr. Turner.
Do you want to have Mr. Wright comment at this point, or would you rather, under your matters, that's your call?
I think under my matters would be the best.
All right, fine. All right, that moves us to adoption of the consent agenda.
There's no public comment to it. I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes. Public hearing, we'll move on to 3A, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, adopting a revised schedule providing fees and charges for use of recreation department facilities, equipment for participation in recreation programs, providing for an effective date requested by the recreation director. Staff comment, please.
As you know, these fees were adopted in accordance with our discussion on the budget, and some of these fees have been raised and some have been lowered. When we lowered them, is, we were trying to take advantage of the economy of scale, try to get more people to participate in those activities. But Rob is available for any breakdown.
Yeah, Rob Sleazak, Recreation Director, definitely. I just want to confirm what Jim's saying. That's exactly what I, that's exactly how we set those rates. We went and made sure we went through the Recreation Commission, the Finance Subcommittee, back to the Recreation Commission, and back to you guys.
All right, I'll open up for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Council comments or motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. All right, there are no ordinances or resolutions or first readings. That moves us on to city clerk's matters.
Okay, we have some reappointments to our boards. We can take this all in one motion if you'd like, or I can go individually, however council wants it. Do you want me to just...
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of the current board members.
Hey, do you want me to tell you which members are being reappointed?
Well, yeah, for the, for the public's benefit, I'm just, I'm reading this in the backup.
Okay, for Architectural Review Commission, it's Mr. Peter Bernholtz, and he'd like to be reappointed. For the Board of Building Appeals, it's Mr. Peter Robinson, and he would like to be reappointed. For the Historic Preservation Commission, it's Ms. Deborah Atwell, and she would like to be reappointed. For the Tree and Beautification Commission, it's Mr. Daniel Downey, and he would like to be reappointed. And for the Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary Committee, it's Mr. Joel Herman, and he would like to be reappointed.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Vok, we're pleased with all these candidates. However, Mr. Downey seemed to have missed quite a few meetings in one year. Was he, or an illness, or some particular...
He was out of town, but he has always made sure that he'd let us know that when he wasn't gonna be at the meeting. And I did talk to him a little bit briefly to make sure that he wanted to continue being on the Tree Commission. He said he would, and that he would be able to make more meetings.
So it was due to a lack of interest?
No, no, not at all.
Right, thank you.
And he was the only Tree and Beautification Committee member at the Arbor Day celebration, so he pulled his weight.
He is active with that commission.
Great, thank you. That is...
I have a motion to, was there a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
All right. No further discussion. Is this, can it be done in a voice call?
Yes, yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Ms. Vok, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Council received a request from the Old Vero Ice Age Site Committee to send a letter to the Historic Preservation Review Board, asking for support for a grant application, and I just brought the letter to you for approval, for the mayor's signature.
I would please, yes, I would please agree to go forward with that letter. Second.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go forward with the letter. Ms. Vok, do you have anything, any further matters?
No, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have one issue. I just wanted to bring up to council and to the public. Ms. Vok, did the Haltz assistants do some research into closed captioning? And, I mean, the initial cost was $3,500 to $10,000, plus an additional $150 to $275 per hour at council meeting. You know, when we've had six, seven, eight-hour council meetings, I just felt this closed caption is rapidly getting out of our reasonable reach of our budget at this time. But I do want to thank you, and I really appreciate you looking at it. And if council, is there any further interest in pursuing this at these rates?
Um, there is one other option that I'm looking at. I'm in the process of talking with Comcast right now to see if they will give us a price to do it, because they do it on their other channels, and Amelia and I, Mrs. Graves and I, were talking about that yesterday. So we're actually in contact with them to see how much they would cost just to do our city council meetings. So once I get that, I will bring it back to council.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great public service, but once again, I think it's gotten out of line. Thank you.
Yeah, I would concur with that. Do you have further matters?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. O'Connor?
The first item that I have is the lease agreement on Indian River Sports Complex Incorporated. As you heard earlier, this is an issue that has got some discussion on it, but it primarily deals around budget issues. As you know, in our budget discussions, the council had asked us to go out and seek options to the fees that we were, or the cost of operating of baseball in the city of Vero Beach. I think there was premised on a couple of parameters. One is that we do want baseball in the city of Vero Beach, but the second was that we recognize the greater percentage of the kids participating happened to be outside the city of Vero Beach, and we received no compensation from the county for those operations. So we have been working with various groups. We have met many times with the American and National League Little League groups, Rob... Rob, I know, spent many hours in discussions and explaining to them about our budget issues. Last year, we did a reduction in our budget for the baseball complex, but we still had a contribution. And the outcome of that has been this lease agreement that has been drawn up. Rob is available to give further details to it because he obviously was the front line on making these discussions. But I just wanted to make sure that we had the historical perspective of how we got to this point.
Mr. Fennig, may I ask a question? Mr. Connor, what is the budgetary impact that we're talking about for Michael's Field as far as utilities and maintenance?
It's about a $10,000 a year cost.
Okay, to the city, that's.
That's right.
Thank you.
Jim, or Wayne, which, do we require these people to hold us the liability? They're going to hold us?
Additionally insured.
Harmless. Harmless.
Yes.
And they have to show insurance to that effect.
And is there any intent of exclusivity? That they alone would be allowed to use the parks?
Yes, sir, they would have control of parks because they obviously are incurring the cost. That would be the operation, maintenance, utilities, and otherwise. We would actually put the utilities into their, they have a corporate name, so we could assign the utility account to a corporate name. And so they would be responsible. They would be like any other customer. If they don't pay, the lights go off.
I just wanted to hear it come from your mouth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask Mr. Sleazak. I'm afraid I'm, I'm still a bit confused. Not having had children playing baseball and understanding the different teams and organizations, I don't know exactly what's going on on the 16th Street facility, what other opportunities are available to the city. Could you give me a little more background on baseball?
Sure. Indian River Sports Complex was the group, an established group that stood up a year ago and said that they thought that they could take on the Little League program, run the program, run it out of the?
Rob, without interfering?
Go ahead.
Tell the difference between Little League, Cal Ripken, Babe Ruth.
Thank you, that's why I'm confused. I appreciate, that's fundamental.
All of those include bats and balls.
And to let you know, they're different organizations with different names, and each one has their merits. Okay? But what I will tell you as a person who played at a professional level?
Yes.
I've played in both at different ages throughout, and I found them to be satisfactory because you wind up with the, going against different folks at different levels throughout your career. So what I found with each one of those leagues is they were beneficial as long as you play baseball. The key is playing baseball. And I played both Little League and Babe Ruth baseball under the age of 12. That's kind of unusual, but it is, in my day, that was kind of unusual. But there was no difference. Your participation and who you're playing against are who, you know, those people in your, in your neighborhood and your community. Now, one other thing I wanted to say too is, you know, one of the things that I've offered, and I know it was brought up by the mayor, is that we do have a field. It's Bob Summers Baseball Park, and it is open. And the idea with Bob Summers is we have no problem with another group coming in and saying they would like to come in and do the mowing and the, pick up the utility costs and go run their program, and they could do variety of sports. So we do have a field available. One other thing. We have asked even this group here to please try and get with the Indian River Sports Complex because I do believe that they want to work with them. But I don't know if there's a rub, what's going on, what the friction is. I'm not sure. And then the last thing is, there's the county. And the county has a number of fields. And I feel there might be opportunities there from Hobart Parks to South County Park. I don't know that. I mean, maybe these folks would be able to enlighten us on all of that. I don't know, but I'm just saying. I, I look at it as we have this group, this Indian River Sports Complex, who's coming in, who has taken on this whole program. They've already had the Junior and Senior League, which was out of Bob Summers Baseball Park over at Indian River Sports Complex on 16th Street. So they've relieved us, relieved us of that burden, economic burden. So, you know, when I, when I look at this overall, you know, we do have a field available for this group.
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm still a bit confused with leagues. So please indulge me. We have Little League, then Cal Ripken, and Babe Ruth. And those are all three different leagues that are available to children in the same age brackets?
That's correct. Now, what has happened is the Little League program, which is the one you see out of Williamsport, they had, there was a concern about trying, they wanted to try and bring all of the Little League programs together to play in Little League. Well, Little League itself, the corporation, said you cannot do that. Now, the Cal Ripken program has said, we can do that, and has done that. So that was kind of a, that was an issue that happened. There used to be, to let you know, there was an American League, a National League. There were two different Little Leagues in the city, county, whatever you want to call, within the city limits, okay? And when these budgetary issues started coming forward, the goal of the group was to try to bring them together and then try to alleviate and relieve themselves of some cost. Little League wouldn't accept it. So that caused kind of an uproar. So Cal Ripken has, has been the program to bring it all together as one group within the city.
Within the city or within the county?
Within the county.
Once again, yeah, that's where I'm getting confused too. We have no city.
Yes, within the county.
Little League or City League whatsoever.
Yes, within the county.
They're all countywide.
That's correct. That is correct. And again, the petition, as Jim had mentioned before, the participation levels, we had gone out and done a study of participants in each one of the different Little Leagues that we had from a year ago. And what we found out was 60 to 80% of those participants were county residents. So that was one of the reasons why we started going with the budget changes.
You know, I have a grandson in Martin County that's played in all three. And he's a good baseball player too, and is on the, on one of the high school teams down there. But it's extremely complicated, to tell you the truth.
It is.
And like, like what we do up here on the podium, there, there's politics, and there's a number of issues involved in it. You know, our motivation as the city was to free the city from expenses, which to some degree has probably triggered all this. We have a responsibility to do that, to minimize the city's expenses for going forward. But we also have a responsibility to the best of our ability to do the right thing. And as I said earlier, I, I would love to see Bob Summers Park in use. And I'm a great fan of baseball. It's the sport I'm most interested in, other than sailing. But I personally think a little more time in this wouldn't hurt anything. Although I will tell you that I am in no way opposed to what the city manager has drawn up. But I, I would think a couple of weeks would hurt nothing.
Like I said, I think, yeah, I thank Rob and Jim too for, yeah, looking and trying to be creative and to help with the budget area. But I certainly would like to have some more time to, to learn about baseball and access for our public facilities. And I want to make sure that that's available for all our residents. And 60 to 80% of the people are using it are in the county. And there are lots of other county facilities available. Why are we going to block off the one that we have in the city? You know, for our city residents that, you know, that are paying their taxes? I, I'd just like to have some more time to get information.
Just as a response to that, if you just leave a field open, as Bob Summers, as an example, then what you're not going to be doing is allowing organized baseball to be able to schedule, which is fine. I mean, you can have the open space, and we could do that. But, yeah, the fact is, is the organizations themselves want to have some control, whether it's the people that we're talking to in this contract or someone else, in order to be able to schedule. We don't have the time or the manpower to schedule all of those activities.
True, I want to get in that. Thank you very much.
And the other thing I want to say too is that this, the Sports Complex group is already, they're an established group that are going to pay for the utilities and the maintenance and everything else. I mean, that is one thing that's in their, that agreement. So they're an established group.
Mr. Kramer, do you have comments? This is an area I know you know something about.
Well, yeah, I mean, my, my son has played with, with the Little League, and I've had the unfortunate experience of umpiring a couple of those games. You know, you think politics up here is bad. Make a bad call there, and you know about it in a heartbeat. You know, the one thing that really kind of bothers me is that I've not heard from the Indian River Sports Complex people. And I'd really like to hear from both sides of the story on this. We're in a tough budgetary year. And, you know, I know there's a lot of county people that participate in Little League. And it's, and it's kind of disheartening that the county commissioners are not stepping up to the plate and helping us on this. You know, I would like to side more towards the local people in, in these issues. But, you know, pushing this off two weeks, I probably don't think it's going to hurt too much. But I would really like to hear from the other side as to, you know, their responsibility. And quite frankly, if, you know, if you gentlemen down here, if you guys are willing to take the same responsibility, I mean, I'll go for the more local people.
I can have the Indian, I think I can get the Indian River Sports Complex here. They had asked if they needed to come today, and I said I really didn't know if they really needed to. But not a problem.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Go ahead, Ms. Graves.
I think that, from what I'm gathering with all the different leagues, is there are a lot of politics at play. But I think that there's going to have to be some compromise across the leagues if the ultimate goal is to have children playing baseball. We do have available fields. We can get them out there. I just, I think that we kind of have to look at the overall picture of getting these fields taken care of, paid for, and getting kids out there. So I think that there's going to have to be some compromises across these leagues in order to do that. And, and it's unfortunate that the city is at this point, budgetary-wise, because we all want kids out there playing. But the city is taking on a lot of responsibility for county kids, and your county commission isn't necessarily chipping in. And I know we've had some discussions about where, which podium this discussion should be happening at. Right now, it's here, and we're working on it. But there's going to have to be compromise between leagues, between county, between city, and between parents understanding the financial realities of, of our parks.
Then one other thing I was going to say too is that with this transition that we've had with this group that has taken over this program, they have saved the city a lot of money already just by taking on all of the leagues, including the older kids as well. So we've got to keep that in mind as well.
This may be a hard thing to do, Rob, but if there's a way of having on a sheet of paper, several sheets of paper or something, something educational about not only baseball in Vero Beach, but in the county, where the parks are and what's going on. And I don't want to make it too arduous, but I'm like Mrs. Turner. I, I don't understand, really.
But I think we're all in agreement to delay, defer this for two weeks to get some more information.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table till the next meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just one more comment before we jump off of that, is that we need to have an organizational structure that we're negotiating with. One of the issues that we found in some of these transactions that we've tried to do, for example, the golf course guys, we find out there's some person or an individual who has a dream, but you can't have that person or that dream sign an insurance policy that protects the city.
Yeah.
Because it becomes a little more of an issue. So we need to make sure that we're negotiating or discussing with organizations that have some capability, and it's not some individual.
We have a public comment that I missed, and so we need to get that also into the record. I'm sorry, I apologize that we moved, moved ahead too fast for you.
Mark Muttrus, 17 Indian Lilac Road. Several of you have mentioned Bob Summers Park and wanting to do something with that. But I know that a month or two ago, there was some discussion of stripping the lights and scoreboard out of there and either giving it or leasing it to the Indian River Sports Complex. And I wondered if, if that's still the case and if that enters into this at all.
Yes, sir, it does. It is in the lease.
No, well, actually, it's a separate item. They, actually, the paperwork is at the county right now. We've not heard back from the county attorney on whether or not.
They would accept it. But it is still part of the same transaction.
Okay, so if someone then, if you wanted to give Bob Summers Park to somebody, then they'd have to come and put in a scoreboard and lights?
Well, no, that hasn't been agreed to by the council yet. Well, scoreboard's already gone. It hasn't been finalized yet. Well, then that's theft. Because there's no agreement to let it go.
But the county has not accepted it.
Well, there's an officer.
But I think the, to answer your question, it is part of the overall transaction.
All right, but if it goes through, and if you get your scoreboard back, then what I said is true that if somebody wanted to come and take over Bob Summers Park, the responsibility for that, then they would need to put new lights if it were to be lit, and certainly a new scoreboard in there. Is that right?
If those are removed, if those assets are removed, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And lights are still there.
Okay, Mr. O'Connor, you have the forum.
Second item is the utility update. Each member of council has received a copy of the recent correspondence. It's been going back and forth. Mr. Jeff Wright is here to sort of bring you up to date
Mr. Chef Wright is here to sort of bring you up to date as to the conversations that have taken place. He has sort of been our liaison in working with FMPA and with OUC, trying to wrangle through some of the contractual issues, primarily with the bond covenants that are there. We have had joint meetings of all three, that being the City of Vero Beach, OUC, and FMPA, trying to work through those issues, but Chef, if you don't mind.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm going to try to answer two questions without getting too technical, but I'll go as deep in the weeds as you all want to go. Questions are where are we and what next? Where are we? You've seen the correspondence very briefly how we got here. You know, I was, my, I've been engaged by the city for more than four years in connection to some utility things. My engagement was expanded effective as of April 15th to try to work on this matter. I jumped in, one of the early issue, the issue on the table, the big issue on the table when I jumped in, was what do we do about the contingent liability issue, which is kind of like the tail, tail end sometime way in the future contractual obligations of Vero Beach in the hypothetical event that OUC, where do we accept assignment of the contracts and then default and somebody, the bondholders would come looking to Vero Beach? I came up with what I thought was a good resolution to that and it would have been a general obligation voter-approved backstop by the city, the county, and Indian River Shores to take responsibility for their proportionate shares of what it was. FMPA agreed, you know, in a conversation between me and their general counsel, Mr. Bryant agreed that that would be a satisfactory, or should be a satisfactory solution to the FMPA, because it's actually a better backstop to the bondholders' concerns than what they have now, which is simply a pledge that we would raise our rates to cover whatever we had to pay. Right about the same time, you know, this is in the latter half of April, the next issue that came to be on the table through conversations, as I understand it, between OUC and FMPA were related to could OUC accept the assignments? Now, OUC did earlier, signed agreements to accept assignments effective January 1 of 18, and then when the contemplated FPL buyback, power purchase agreements from OUC were essentially put to the side because of concerns regarding the IRS's private use rules, the question then became would OUC, then FMPA, then back to OUC, would, the bottom line question was would OUC accept the assignment and transfer of the contracts, our contracts, to them, leaving the contingent liability thing hanging out there, and then assume our obligations? That issue then came to the fore on April 30th. Mr. Browder, OUC's general counsel, wrote Mr. Bryant a somewhat lengthy, about three and a half page, letter saying, "We have some real issues with this assignment." That as simply as possible, he said, "Unless you are willing to change the terms of your contracts with Vero Beach that we would be assuming, we have great difficulty accepting this, because some of the covenants that we would be stepping into on behalf of Vero Beach would conflict with our own covenants vis-à-vis our own OUC bonds." So there was that letter of April 30th. We had some conversations, there was a conference telephone call that included FMPA, their bond counsel, OUC, their bond counsel, and myself and Mr., you were on the call? I think Wayne was on the call, Mr. Igo was on the call, and I think, I think Mr. O'Connor was on the call. On May 19th, in which there was extensive discussion had, actually, the call was scheduled for two hours, it ran over a little bit, but the bottom line was the bond councils for the respective parties, Mr. Stevens for OUC and Mr. McMahon for FMPA, said, "We see real problems here." OUC agreed that they would go back to their bond counsel and further explore whether they could accept the terms, the terms of the contracts that we have, we at Vero Beach have, with FMPA. On May 29th, a letter was delivered by Mr. Browder to Mr. Bryant saying, "At the, in our May 19th call, we agreed that we would, we would confer further with our bond counsel. We have done so. Our bond counsel sees no way that we can deal with these without violating our own bond covenants." And furthermore, although he did not articulate anything specific, he said, "Furthermore, bond counsel has raised additional issues. Please advise whether we can work toward amending the contracts." Mr. Bryant conferred with Mr. McMahon, and I believe had been doing so during that entering veining two weeks and probably, probably since, I'm bad, no, not probably, since April 30th at least, and sent back a letter on May 30th to Mr. Browder saying, "We cannot agree to amend our contracts." Mr. Browder then sent a letter to us as counterparty to the assignments and transfer agreements between Vero Beach and OUC, and us as Mr. Coment, your city attorney, myself, and Mr. Igo, saying, "We are at an impasse. We see no feasible means of moving forward. We can't recommend accepting these changes." Mr. McMahon and Mr. Bryant said, "We can't accept the changes." So in, in, in technical terms, where we are is we have a, a pretty clear failure of our ability to satisfy a condition precedent to closing the transaction with FPL, because there are failures of conditions precedent to closing the assignments of our PPAs to OUC. It's not, it's not good, folks. It's not good, but if there are other questions, I'm happy to take them or I'll move on to what next.
Do you want to move on to where we would go, or would you rather have Mrs. Turner ask a question about what you said? I don't care.
I think it's probably better to ask questions now.
Okay.
I could say, in essence, OUC has thrown us under the bus. I mean, they encouraged us, "Don't investigate anything about the former contract for our excess power with OUC that we signed in 2008, because we're going to help you get out of FMPA. We're going to be your partner. We're going to work with you and FPL." So the city backed off. Then we go forward and we execute these agreements. "Oh, yeah, we'll take your power entitlement after 2016. You know, don't worry about it. We'll get that done and we're going to help, we're going to work with this." And then, at the last minute, "I am sorry, guys, you know, we just, our bond commitments can't make it." I mean, obviously, there's no reason they wouldn't have known this two years ago. And like I said, I think they've just thrown us under the bus.
Just for, I guess, sort of a historical perspective, we knew that these power supply contracts were a critical part of this whole transaction. And we had, we saw three outlets that we could try to do. One is that we went to FMPA, who did an RFP for proposals to buy our capacity, and we found out that people wanted some fractions of it, but not the total capacity need. So we did try to do that. The second was, is we went to FPNL, and was there a way for them to absorb the power, even at a discount or something? Obviously, the long-term, you have IRS issues that really impacted that even, we couldn't even get over the three years, more or less, a long-term. And then OUC was our outlet. We really thought we had an opportunity here, but when it got down to the fine print, similar to the discussions about the IRS, I think that's where we've run into the rocks.
Mr. Wright, is OUC on, under the agreements, are they on firm ground? I mean, we have a signed PPA, signed transfer?
I really have not delved into that in that depth. I can tell you what their letters say, and Mr. Browder said these things to me and to the FMPA folks verbally. You know, what they say is, in October of 2012, when they signed the agreements, they were under a lot of time pressure to get the agreements signed, that they did recognize there were issues, and accordingly, they put a condition precedent in, into the agreement saying that the agreements could only become final if any amendments necessary to reflect the assignment were made to the PPAs. And it is now, whatever, 20 months later, that they have looked at those more closely and are invoking that provision as saying that they can't go forward because of the irreconcilable conflicts between their bond covenants. And FMPA says they cannot consent to changing the contracts to accommodate OUC, because that would irrevocably compromise, I shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't say irrevocably, but, you know, probably so, that would compromise their bond covenants.
Mayor, if I could interject?
Yes, Wayne.
That particular, and I think Chef would agree with this, that particular assignment agreement between us and OUC doesn't even become effective until closing of the whole transaction. But what there is that Chef and John Igo may want to look at is the three-way letter of understanding, I think it was, that got us to that point. You probably have that in a stack of papers.
I do.
But that's the one thing we might want to look at to maybe better answer your question of whether or not they're on good, firm ground on just walking away at this point.
And just in terms of our agreement with FPL, the asset purchase and sale agreement, there are conditions precedent in there that specifically say we have to satisfy all the conditions precedent to the assignment of the PPAs to OUC.
We can backtrack a little on this, but I'd like to hear what you think we do now. That's what I'd like to hear.
We have a contract with Florida Power and Light. I have an appointment to meet with Florida Power and Light's general counsel this afternoon to discuss the situation and ask him essentially what they think we should do next.
You, and I know you've been talking to Mr. Igo. Is he on the same page as you are on all this? He, I believe he's in California at the graduation of his daughter from college, or he would be here today, but I'll ask the question again. I mean, are you, Mr. Igo, on the same page?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, you know, first of all, I got to kind of object to the idea that OUC is throwing us under the bus. When I was mayor and I talked to them, they were very adamant that they are going to do what's in the best interest of Vero Beach, and they wanted to be our partners at it. The very first iteration of power purchase agreements, they were rather signed hastily. They were, with some advice, advised not to sign those. And quite frankly, the, you know, I see OUC as just trying to help us out, and once again, they're getting burned by helping Vero Beach out. You know, my perspective is that I'm sure OUC probably, you know, after all of the contract debacle that happened earlier on, really just wanted to get away from Vero Beach and had an incentive to do so. And here we are again blaming OUC for problems that, quite frankly, we should have tried to solve before we even went to OUC.
You know, I'd like to comment on that in the October 2012 meeting. When we voted on the PPAs, there, there was objection from two of us in city council. I was one, that we hadn't fully dealt with the bond issue. And it looks like we hadn't fully dealt with the bond issue. So I guess I have no further useful comment, except I'm hugely disappointed. Mr. Fletcher, Ms. Graves?
No, I have nothing.
Ms. Turner, by all means, anything you could?
Anything else? Thank you very much, Mr. Wright, and you'll report to us back with, after meeting with Mr. Litchfield about, if there's anything from there.
Of course, thanks. And there's, there's a whole lot of stuff after that, but that's, that's at the top of the list. And they're, they're our contract partners. We're going to consult with them and see, see whether, whether there's anything we can do next.
Do you have one more question? The April 2nd meeting that you held with FMPA, they were supposed to get back on stranded costs, consequential damages, quantifying that. Have we ever received any response back from them yet, since they committed to the bill of may?
The answer to that question is, no, we have not. I was told on Friday afternoon by Mr. Finkley, the general counsel, deputy general counsel of FMPA, that, and actually also by, by Mr. Bryant, that we should receive that later this week.
Mr. O'Connor, that is still.
There was a near-final draft within FMPA that we should receive later this week. That's what I was, and I expect that to be true.
That's still relevant, isn't it, declaring FMPA?
It's still relevant in the fact.
The all requirements, I mean.
That's correct. It is still.
We have to clear the all requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright, I'll let Mr. Wilson ask a question.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions, since you're here, thank you very much. One is, the irreconcilable differences that you're talking about are all FMPA irreconcilable differences. Is that correct, number one? Because they're the ones that are setting these rules and making these decisions and saying that it's not, their interpretation is what's making it irreconcilable. Number two is the contract with FPNL that we have will then, there's no harm for it to stay on the table, because we were told early that maybe we should put this out for bids. Well, there is no other buyer, and we were told earlier that there could be a partial sale, and that seems to be not possible. So is there any drawback to having the FPNL contract stay there for the next, the length of time while we work a different way to get FMPA, perhaps where they don't have the choices? And then thirdly, we have had legal advice from our city attorney that says that we have no ability or right to, to, to go to court on behalf of the citizens. Is that, and he said, "He has been told." Now, we have been told that he had been told by you. So is it, in your opinion, does the City of Vero Beach have legal rights to go to court, for the courts to weigh in on the administration of these, of these? So there's three questions, those are three questions.
Let me rephrase them, and I think you'll agree, Mr. Wilson, these are correct. Is the impasse all on the part of FMPA or does it involve others? That's number one. Would it be advisable to leave the contract on the table? I think what you're going to say is, we have to talk to Florida Power and Light. And the third, were the FMPA contracts legally vetted at the time that they went to court for review? Does that satisfy you, Mr. Wilson?
No.
No, they were legally vetted. It's that, but in 1983, the issues that were in 1983 are not the issues today.
All right, all right.
It's the question, do we have the right to go to court on the issues that were not vetted in 1983?
All right. So first, the first question is, is the impasse all on the FMPA side, or does it involve others?
It involves OUC as well as FMPA.
And Chef, just so you know, if I could interrupt a second. I just did receive the legal opinion that was sent to Chris Browder by their bond counsel of Holland and Knight, and that was the backup for Chris's letter to FMPA.
Thank you.
So I have a copy for you.
Great, thank you.
Oh, it's, it would be fair to say, it's not fair to say the impasse is all caused by FMPA, OUC is a party to it in one form or another?
It's the bond counsel.
The bond councils for each of them. Define it as you.
Yes, I, yeah. Your statement is correct. It is, you know, there are irreconcilable conflicts between FMPA and OUC per se, also by their bond councils, who's, who are separate parties, and at least FMPA's, well, FMPA is being advised in this respect by their bond counsel. There are a host of parties whose ultimate consents would have to be obtained in connection with the contemplated transaction. Among those are the bond trustee, which is going to be backstopped by their bond counsel, who is not Mr. McMahon, it's somebody else, and I don't even know who the bond trustee's bond counsel is, but I'll bet you a lot that the bond trustee's bond counsel, having seen what Mr. Stevens and Mr. McMahon had to say, is going to say, "We ain't, we're not going to give our consent to this." But there's also, so there's the bond trustee, the bond insurer, the consulting engineer to the, to the bondholder parties, there are all these others. So it's, it's, at a minimum, it's OUC and FMPA and the bond parties on the FMPA side, side of the FMPA bonds. Because of the relationship between, because of the contemplated assignment to OUC, it's also the bondholders on the OUC side, because they would have to sign off on, on OUC accepting the contracts as is, which is what FMPA's position is. They'd have to sign off on that, so there are multiple parties involved there.
Okay, the second question is, we have a contract with Florida Power and Light. What happens?
Well, I am awaiting the results of my conversation with Mr. Litchfield this afternoon, and I'll report back to you, and we'll see where we go from there. Mr. Wilson asked, is there any harm to leaving it on the table? I don't, I don't know. We just need to figure out where we are at this point. I want to figure out where we are at this point. And finally, as to the right to challenge, you know, I don't mean this facetiously, this is America and people can go to court. I will tell you that, having read the validation documents, the underlying statutes that were in place under which the validation opinions of the, of the courts of Florida were given, and having read your city attorney's opinions, that, that the contracts were valid, legal, binding, and enforceable according to their terms, and that all appropriate actions had been taken to approve the cities entering into the three contracts, Stanton I, Stanton II, and St. Lucy, at the times they were entered into, I think a direct challenge, and if you want a more formal opinion, I'll work on it for you, but I think a direct challenge to the validity of the contracts themselves would be meritless. Now, you know, is it, is it conceivable that, that the city could bring an action for breach of contract against FMPA? That is conceivable. I'm not aware of any facts that would give rise to such a, such a claim at this time, but, you know, if you want to explore that, we'll, we'll explore that. And Mr. Wilson's right, there are other issues out there, but those, those may or may not have any basis, but not in my tentative opinion, this is, I'm stopping short of giving you the formal legal opinion today, but I don't think the City of Vero Beach has the legal ability to bring that, which is to say, I think if you tried to bring such an action, you would be met with a motion to dismiss that would most likely be granted, and I'm willing to work on more detailed research and opinion to that question.
Let me ask you a follow-up question, even if there had been a breach, which there's no evidence that that's the case, that would not invalidate the contract. There would be, what would be the consequence if there was a breach of some sort?
Normally, the consequence is damages.
So it doesn't end the contract.
Or whatever other relief a court might have within its jurisdiction to grant. Normally, the action for breach is damages.
Yes, so that wouldn't get us to where we'd like to get, which is to sell the utility and fund the unfunded pension. I would like to point out that in 2004 and '05, the city spent $1.3 million unsuccessfully arbitrating a case against the Florida Municipal Power Agency. And as the losing party, the city paid another $587,307 to reimburse FMPA for its costs in the case. And at this point in time, we spent over a million and a half, and we won't stop short of $2 million on this one.
And actually, that's another point. I was focused on termination and conditions precedent, but I think that the, that the dispute resolution under our agreements is arbitration, and so you don't go to court for arbitration, you go to the arbitrator according to the protocols that are specified in the underlying agreement. And if, whatever, whatever the ruling of the arbitrator or arbitration panel is, then goes to court for enforcement, but that's really about it. protocols that are specified in the underlying agreement. And if, whatever the ruling of the arbitrator or arbitration panel is, then goes to court for enforcement. But that's really about it.
Ms. Turner, you look like you want to say something. If you do.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Gafanti, make your questions, you know, so we can zero in on them, please. I know you do.
Yeah, I'm still Mr. Gafanti, and I still live at Holly Road. I'd like to make an inquiry about the bond. How many sets of bonds are there? I don't care who answers. You talk about the bond issue. How many?
Right. And I can answer that for you.
Thank you.
There's three power projects. There's the St. Lucy 2, which Vero Beach is one of the part...
I don't...
Stanton 1 and Stanton 2. So there's three projects.
The three separate bonds that are impediments to our, impediments to the sale. Is that correct? How are these bonds? Is that correct?
Well, I don't know. You're calling them impediments. It's our contracts.
Contracts, okay. I call them impediments. So you're talking, somebody here is talking about the bonds, and I want to know which that are a problem. I call, that's an impediment. That's, I know what the word impediment means. It's an impediment. There are three sets of bonds. Is that correct? Okay. How are these bonds distributed? Were they put on the open market, or are there certain groups of people or organizations that hold these bonds?
Yeah. I really don't know. St. Lucie was about 33 years ago. Stanton 1 was, I think, was around 30 years ago, and Stanton 2 is like 22 years ago.
Are they publicly traded?
I don't know. I doubt it.
I think somebody should know that these bonds are an impediment. Somebody should know the nature of the bonds. Are these bonds callable?
They're FMPA's bonds, they're not our bonds.
But they're bonds, and we should have access to the nature of the bond, I would imagine. And then, one of the most important things, if the bonds are callable. Do you understand the nature of my question?
Sure.
Do you understand the significance of it?
I have no idea.
Pardon?
Have no idea.
Do you don't understand the significance of a callable bond?
Oh, yes.
Okay. If these bonds were callable, call them, put an end to them, right? Is that correct?
Sure.
Thank you. Now, I'd like somebody to find out if these bonds are callable.
Right.
Because that may be a solution to the problem.
And I think, Mr. Wright might have explored that. I'm not sure.
Well, I think Mr. Dunlap would be the one to do that, and I think it would be appropriate for the city, whether Wayne, you, or Jim, or Cindy, to ask that question of Mr. Dunlap. He would know. He is their bond counsel, but he also does work for us. So he would know the answer to your question.
Okay. I think that should be done. As far as the validity of any contracts, we're not asking to weigh in court-wise on the validity of the contracts. That's not the question. The question is, we are suffering from an agreement. You people may not see it as so, but the taxpayers and the, well, the ratepayers are, most certainly are suffering. It seems to me, as I said before intuitively, that we should be able to get some relief from some organization, either the courts or, as the learned attorney said, an arbitration panel. It just intuitively, you would think that if you're in a tight spot, you should be able to get out of it. And that a couple of people in the past can't encumber the city forever. And it's, you can't hang this on somebody moving into Vero Beach tomorrow or today forever, because they had nothing to do with this. They weren't around here to speak up against Nason, Gabbert, and the shenanigans that went on, and Vertunick, et cetera. They weren't here. And so now, the people, the public has a right to some relief. And I'm speaking intuitively. And just because there's a contract, doesn't mean that it can't be dissolved in some way, shape, or form, at the cost of the city of Vero Beach, of course. You know, an offer was made, which is something that I'd like to see addressed, by FMPA, about a $52 million deal. And then, FPL came and agreed to some, to settle that. And all of a sudden, the FMPA withdrew that offer. And I never quite understood what happened there. And I must say this, that some people think, well, this FMPA system is a mob, a mafia-run operation. And I assure you, it's not, because if the mob makes an offer, extend a courtesy, as they might say, they don't reneg, or so I've been told.
Thank you, Mr. Gafanti.
That's, I'm not, I'll tell you when I'm finished.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why I bring this up. Somebody should address these issues. And these are the issues that aren't asked in the press, and nobody seems to care about them, but they're important. The thing you have to do is find out if the bonds are callable to start out with.
Thanks for your comments. Ms. Turner, would you like to comment?
Good day.
I just want to address Mr. Gafanti's question about the $52 million. I did put in a public information request to FMPA. I have yet to receive my full response. Their deputy counsel was addressing the issue, and he had a death in the family. And I did receive an email from him last week saying that, yes, that it's still on the list for them to respond to. And within accordance with public records, they really must respond to that within 30 days, or they can be accused of delay. So I'll bring forward the information I get on that.
Thanks for your comment. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, just 30 seconds, and I appreciate, I appreciate the courtesy. It was just a follow-up to the questions, because apparently, I'm sure that I don't communicate well, and I need some more practice, but, because the legal question that I asked the attorney was about challenging the FMPA, and the answer was about challenging the original contracts from 1983. I'm not suggesting that we challenge the original contracts from 1983. The question was, is are there other legal remedies available to the city of Vero Beach on issues that are not those, the contract from 1983? For instance, about bonds, about reissuing bonds, about who's under that original agreement from 1983 and who's not. Can we change the territorial agreements? As an example, these are the kind of issues that we are now being asked to believe whatever FMPA says and what we're, and then it's the, so are there other legal, I understand the 1983 agreement. And the reason it can't be appealable, I read anyway, is that nobody tried to do so within 30 days, and so it became final, and not appealable. It's not because it's done deal, it's just that's, that part is done. The second question was about the, if FMPA was the single impediment. And the answer was, no, OUC has difficulties also. But is it not true that the FMPA could make OUC's difficulties go away? So the fact is, is by the FMPA making the decisions the FMPA makes, it has made it impossible for OUC and Vero Beach? That everything actually comes down to the FMPA's bonds telling the FMPA, no, and then the FMPA telling the city of Vero Beach and OUC, no. So the fact is, is that the board of directors of the FMPA, by a vote of the board of directors of the FMPA, the FMPA can overrule any of these issues that are facing us. That the fact is, is that FMPA's board of directors, and actually, not even their board of directors, their staff is making these decisions, not the individual cities. So the question again to the attorney is, there is no requirement that the FMPA, the reason we're at an impasse is because FMPA is setting the requirements. True or not true?
This comment, the St. Lucie contracts were taken to the Florida Supreme Court, and then the other two contracts were not taken to them because the Supreme Court validated, Florida Supreme Court validated. Mr. Kramer, do you have any comment before we let Mr. Wright comment?
Well, I just, you know, one thing, I just want to ask Wayne if he could just get us an answer whether the bonds are callable. I'm sure a quick...
I mean, does it matter? Do you have $1 billion to pay them off?
It matters because the public asked. And we, and we're concerned...
We'll certainly ask.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, sure. Well, I've lost my train of thought, but in any case, you know, FMPA has a responsibility to the other cities. FMPA, you know, by us asking them to compromise their duties to other cities for our benefit, it's just not going to happen. You know, if you can find a way to do this that benefits all the cities, by all means, go around all the cities and trial them together. I believe, Mr. Wilson, you had this plan earlier on, the going to all the mayors.
Three years ago.
You know, three years ago, you know, I think by now you could have had a pretty strong vote with FMPA to do what you want to do. But it is the FMPA members who do put the people up there to vote. And if you're going to change the contracts, the contracts have to be ratified by all the FMPA members. The staff and the executive people up there cannot do that. It has to be ratified.
Mr. Wright, I'd like him to answer. Mr. Wilson, first, please. Mr. Wilson asked a question as a matter of protocol. The first question was basically, is FMPA and OUC, are they within the four corners of their agreements, accepting the agreements as being legal? And the second question was, is this all FMPA, which you've answered once before, but anyway.
As far as I can tell, and stopping short of giving you a formal written legal opinion, I believe OUC and FMPA are within the four corners of their agreements that are applicable here. FMPA is not only responsible to its membership, it is also responsible under the bond resolution to the bondholders, the bond trustee. And that, if they were to try to, if they were to act as though they were going to amend the contracts, the approval of the bond trustee under our contracts would have to be given in the first instance. Also, I'm sure under the bond resolution, although I'm not going to stand here and tell you, I've read every word of the bond resolution, but I'm sure that the bond trustee and the counsel for the bond trustee and the bond insurer, at a minimum, and the consulting engineer too, would all have to sign off on that. So it's not just FMPA. At this point, FMPA has upstream responsibilities, not only to its 33 members, I think, total, or 20 participants in the various contracts that we're talking about here. They also have upstream responsibilities, and very serious ones at that, to the bondholders and the bond trustee as representative of the bondholders.
I, for what it's worth, so today's Monday, Tuesday, yesterday was Monday. I had the occasion to talk to Mr. Igo and ask him the question, were the two of them within the four corners? And I asked you at the same time, and the answer was yes. So, I mean, that's, that's an answer. It would cost a lot of money to do something. Mr. Gafanti, you were up there, and I didn't mean to be impolite to you.
No, not at all, and I didn't mean to be disrespectful to you either. But thank you. I just wanted to say, without any, I'll refrain from my traditional negativity and say that if you were to have, if the bonds were callable, you issue another bond and use the proceeds of that bond to satisfy the people who are currently holding the bonds that, if they're callable, would be called. And that's how you would resolve the financial situation that I don't have $3 billion in my back pocket either, but that's how you would resolve that issue. Very simple.
Thanks for your clarification, Mr. Peter. You know, what we're doing is we're asking questions, but I think there are questions that are valuable that the public would like to know the answer to, and in many cases, I think we would. So even though we're changing the format, but I think it's a valuable exercise. I have your question.
Mark Peter, again. Mayor, you said Craig Dunlap was their bond counsel as well as our.
That's correct.
Do you mean there, he is FMPA's bond counsel?
That's correct.
Or who's bond counselor? Okay.
That's correct.
Wait, just a minute. Craig Dunlap is not a bond counsel, he's a financial advisor.
Okay.
Oh, all right. Well, little known fact, Rick Miller, one of our two transactional attorneys, is primarily a bond counsel, so he might be the one to ask and not Dunlap. Mayor, you read from about the 2004, 2005 FMPA suit, or arbitration. That was, I believe, word for word from Mark Schuman's blog. But, and people throw it out there, but it had absolutely nothing to do with this case. We, it was an arbitration on the level of compensation for our power plant. It had nothing to do with getting out of FMPA or anything else. So I'd appreciate if people don't throw these, you know, further log jams out there.
Can I comment on that? You indeed are correct. It had to do with clearing ourselves of our, the ARP requirements. And the only reason I...
No, it didn't.
The only reason I cited it is, it was an expensive losing proposition, that's all.
Well, but on a completely different subject. I mean, if I sued you for hitting me in a car, and then later, you sued me for, you know, burning your house down, they're unrelated.
Correct. It had nothing to do with today's current issue. It had to do with an illegal expense that we incurred, that we lost. I just don't want to lose another one.
Yeah, most lawsuits do.
But you're correct.
Okay. Finally, I guess I'd like to make a comment, and that is that a lot of us had said for a long time that FMPA will never let us go voluntarily for any amount of money. I don't know why we ever expected that they would, but, except that they have told us face to face with a smile on their face, that they will do everything they possibly can to help us complete this sale. And behind that smile, they've done just the opposite. And it's about time we realized that. Sam Forrest at Florida Power and Light asked them to come up with a number that would be all-inclusive, fuel, contingent liabilities, what's the biggest number you can think of kind of thing? And they said $52 million. And Florida Power and Light took a little while, but then they finally called their bluff. They said, okay, $52 million. Then FMPA turned around, I don't know if I'm telling you anything, you don't know, I don't know how much of the public knows this, that FMPA turned around and says, well, no, that wasn't all-inclusive, it was only for fuel. And then they said, well, no, we won't even do that for the fuel. So, and now they've gotten to OUC and told them, they can't take our fuel for what we've contracted for. So as I say, and as I've said before, FMPA will never let us go voluntarily. Thank you.
Can you further comment?
I just have a quick comment on this $52 million. The way it was told to me that that $52 million was for power only, and when they struck that deal with FPNL and FMPA, they were to mutually do a press conference, and FMPA was going to be given time to talk to all their members to make sure that this was all known to everybody. Immediately what happened the next day is that FPNL met with the press, and they told everybody that this was, included all the contingents, all the liabilities, contingent liabilities, and said it was a done deal, and they were saying okay to it, which was not what FMPA had bargained for. And FMPA had asked them for time to be able to notify all their members. FPNL blatantly went out there, did a press release, and caught FMPA totally by surprise. As far as I'm concerned, FPNL really tried to push this in a political arena and did not act in good faith with FMPA, and that's probably why you see the bad faith between FMPA and FPNL on that $52 million deal.
I think we can move forward to the next subject. Mr. Wright, thank you, unless you have something else. The council has anything else for Mr. Wright?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other questions, that, the two items.
Are there other questions for the city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I did note that we received a memo that, I realize we don't have a final number on proposed tax value for the year, but it looks, it looks like it's showing possibly a two... I give that a... I gave that enough qualifications before I stated it, the possible 2.3% increase in...
Assess value. Yes, ma'am, and that's very positive for the community, as we have seen, really, most of our indicators, the tourist tax has shown an indication of more activity.
Significant.
If you go down to the marina, the activity of new personal boats that are coming in, we have shown an increase in the numbers. They stayed longer this year at the marina, the boats that did tie up in moorings, now we're down again because it's off-season. But from all indicators of the city, we're back on the up-track and moving forward. The assessed value, a little lower than, actually, than what we were sort of hoping for, thinking that it was, but at least this is two consecutive years in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Gafanti.
No further questions for the city manager, or the attorney, please.
I don't have anything else.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, could you get, Mr. Kamak, could you give us an update on what, where our vacation rental case is? And I get a lot of questions out in the public from...
Honestly, I'm not tracking it real close, because I'm not counseling that because of my conflict, but...
No, but at least we're, yes.
My understanding is, all parties have now done their responses. I believe the city's attorney has done the reply to the answer brief. I have not heard of a oral arguments being scheduled, but that's the most logical next step, that the court would schedule oral argument.
But ask them, but yeah, especially for our next meeting, if you'd give us an update, because like I said, it isn't a subject of great interest in the public, and I'd like to keep them advised.
Right, and as you know, of course, the legislature started out with a bang, they were going to help correct the problem, but...
Well, that's, I wonder if we had some of the delay in having this whole issue resolved.
Yeah, so hopefully the court is going to, you know, uphold the city's code.
Thank you.
All right. We have no city council matters, either old or new business, so we'll move on to individual council member matters, if that's satisfactory to the council. I was pleased to go Monday, a week ago, to the Memorial Day Festival, which was absolutely wonderful. And this year, they had veterans of all the wars, I don't know that they were all the wars, but figuratively at least, all the wars up there, and it was really very stirring. It's one of the things, sometimes, this is kind of a discouraging place to sit for all five of us, and it was one of the things that really gave me faith in this town, and all of this is really worthwhile. The other thing that I wanted to comment, I did the downtown Vero concert, and gosh, it was, it was really, really, really great. There was great turnout, a lot of people having a lot of fun, and again, something very upbeat about this community. Those are the two comments I have. Mr. Kramer?
Well, I also did the Memorial Island ceremony. Just want to say a really great thanks to the, to our Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary Committee. They seem to be able to pull this off very well every year, and also want to thank Amelie Loy for her speech on the history of that island. I actually have learned quite a bit, and if I'm not mistaken, I think we filmed that, and I think we've got that...
Actually, it was running this weekend on Channel 13.
Well, I hope a lot of people saw that. Also, just want to remind people coming up Friday, we've got our art walk here in downtown Vero Beach, and I'll turn it over.
Ms. Turner?
Thank you. Captain, in correspondence, we received a copy of the commuter railroad letter service agreement. And what this is, it's a letter agreement between South Florida Regional Transport Authority and All Aboard Florida. For any of those who thought that we might be getting a station here, or thought that that might make All Aboard more satisfactory, according to this agreement, for the first five years after the date that All Aboard commences revenue service, All Aboard will not establish or have its train stop at more stations than the three proposed intercity passengers. Like I said, not, not again that I think that it's going to make it, but anybody who's waving, oh, we'll have a stop here, as that's going to make it more palatable, they're banned for that for at least five years. Once again, I want to remind everybody about our fertilizer ban has started. Unfortunately, if you were out in the lagoon over Memorial Day weekend and saw the lingua, that it thrives in warm water and the high nutrient level. I mean, we are only in June, just the beginning of our summer season, and this could pose a serious health risk for anyone in the water, from swimmer's itch to alr- allergy reactions. So please be careful with that. Remember that all canals lead to the lagoon. And I think we've covered everything, everything else. I want to, yeah, once again, thank our committee members of the Veterans Memorial Island for preserving this special place for 50 years. The FMPA will be looking at their budget. I've got a first draft of it, and I think it's interesting to point out that for the Stanton project, their wholesale cost to us projected for next year is $129.88 a megawatt. I mean, that is our, that is about our retail cost, so there obviously is no room for any of them, but this is what our wholesale power cost would be. On the other projects, it's in the 75 to 78 range, but Stanton is a coal project, we get the majority of our power from FMPA from this project. It will also be falling under this 38% reduction in coal emissions that the EPA is coming out with, so we'll be pressing them to get more information on that. Thank you.
Ms. Graves?
Just again, another thank you also to the Boy Scouts for the Veterans Memorial Day Island Celebration. They were hauling huge cases of water out and passing them out to people who are attending, and all the city staff and all the volunteers who prepared the area and cleaned it up. And it was really something to see Amelie Loy cut a cake with a saber. I have to say, that was one of my favorite moments, so thank you.
Mr. Fletcher?
I have no issues. I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.